Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the July 12, 2021 Town Council Meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For attendance tonight, we have all councilors in attendance except for Peter May and we have Councilor Dombrowski and Councilor Chines in attendance and online virtually. Everybody can hear us okay online? Thumbs up, great. Item number four, public engagement. Sherry, I believe we had one, but I'm gonna let you announce in case there's any changes.
Oh sure, yeah, thank you. We have Janine Fabiano, 29 West Diet Street, and I do see her on tonight.
Great, thanks Janine. We'll give you about three minutes and glad to hear your thoughts. We may or may not engage or we may take it up in a future agenda item. Please proceed. Yeah, I think you're on.
You're muted.
There we are, now can you hear me?
There you go, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, alright. Thank you councilors for this opportunity to address the council. I am Janine Fabiano, a town president and also the president of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Wakefield. The Town Council voted in May, in March of 2021 to extend outdoor dining through December 2021, December, when prediction was for a much slower rollout of the vaccination and a slower recovery for our state and our country. However, by late May, the Commonwealth had reached a much higher rate of vaccination and had greatly reduced the infection rate of COVID. Massachusetts was fully reopened. Now with businesses operating at 100% capacity, the demand for parking has greatly increased and the downtown currently has 17 less spots. Also, an important decision that was made back in March impacting all of these local businesses was made without any conversation that I am aware of with any local establishments or such as Unitarian Church. Unitarian Church, along with most of the Wakefield institutions and businesses, also suffered over the past year. These establishments could not operate or only operated in limited capacity, now need to open and begin to try to recoup their financial losses. However, the 17 parking spots that are currently being taken up are helping just four of these businesses in the local downtown area. Seven of them are actually service, usually Universalist Church. This restriction of parking does not help the other establishments, but negatively of them and their financial recovery. I first became of this situation in making plans for our service.
Yes, it sounds like we may have a poor. Janine, maybe.
Councilors, I found out that our.
Shut our video off. Maybe you should shut your video off because you keep going back and forth and we can't hear you.
What? I probably don't have a probably don't have a very good internet connection.
Maybe just turn off your, sometimes if you turn off your video and just do audio.
Try to continue?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Alright, let's see how that goes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I became concerned when we wanted to make our plans for reopening and communicating to a couple of the town until January of 2022.
Yeah, the connection.
I decided to check and see how other establishments.
I think I have her copy.
We have the letter.
We have the letter. Janine, I'm gonna stop you because it's going in and out and we do have your letter here expressing concerns about the parking spaces. So, I think, let's see.
I think we all got it.
I think that everybody, everybody has that? So I think what we're gonna do is we will all make sure that we have reviewed that and perhaps discuss on an agenda at the next meeting. Unless any councilors would like to share any thoughts now.
I wouldn't, I just wouldn't promise at the next meeting since we certainly have time because I would rather wanna get a taste of everyone.
Okay.
Maybe, you know, at a future meeting, certainly in time to address their concerns.
So we're gonna do it at a future meeting and I think in the meantime, you know, Steve, Aaron can kinda give feedback from some of the other businesses as well. So thank you so much for bringing this to our attention and we will discuss it at a future meeting. Thank you. Any other public comment, Sherry?
Wonderful, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Janine.
Thank you so much.
Now we'll do that with it.
Okay, great. So moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening. The first from the June 10, 2021 Town Council Meeting, which was the retreat. Did anybody, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
All opposed? Okay, so Sherry, that's a vote of six to zero.
Yeah, I think because we do have.
Oh, we do need to do.
I think you have to do this by roll call.
Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call vote. Let's see, Councilor Santos.
Um, yes.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Aye.
Councilor Chines.
Yes.
Councilor Danahy.
Yes.
Councilor Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Similarly, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 28, 2021 Town Meeting, uh, Town Council Meeting?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Councilor Chines.
Yes.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Aye.
Councilor Danahy.
Yes.
Councilor Butt.
Yes.
Councilor Santos.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, passed six to zero. Item number six, Chief Scory, welcome. You've had quite a few weeks here.
Thank you, it's been busy.
Yes. So, we put you on for an update, but I think, I speak for everyone and they can put their own. We thank you so much for your leadership and patience and dealing with the very unfortunate Saturday situation of the 4th of July weekend. So please extend our thanks to your entire group and all the town committee, uh, town meeting, or rather town employees who I know played a big role. But if you wanna give us a little overview and update on that or anything else happening in the department, we welcome it.
Alright, sure, I can, would you like an overview of the incident itself?
Sure, please.
Okay, so I'll give you the basics here. At about 1:20 in the morning on July 3, State Police called Wakefield Police looking for assistance where they stop up on the highway. They said the trooper was having some issues up there. They didn't really give us any specifics, so we sent three officers. We sent Sergeant Burnham, Officers Jancy and Officer Peterson. So Sergeant Burnham was the first to arrive and when he got up there, the trooper on scene gave him a brief synopsis of what was happening. So he basically, the trooper, rolled up on two cars that were in breakdown land. He thought that maybe they were broken down and they needed assistance. He was immediately met by 11 individuals who were dressed in camouflage gear, bulletproof vests, tactical gear and were armed with long guns and handguns and were fully exposed. So to the trooper's credit, he kept his cool. He communicated quite well with these individuals, engaged them in conversation about what they were doing, what their purpose was, where they were going. And at some point, he asked for driver's licenses and licensed to carries for firearms and that's when these individuals took up the sovereign attitude that they did not have to adhere by our laws. So Sergeant Burnham, this trooper and a sergeant from the State Police spent probably close to an hour and 40 minutes negotiating back and forth with these individuals until it got to the point where it came to a head and the sergeant from the State Police told them more likely than not that they would be placed under arrest. It was at that point that three of the individuals could be heard loading their rifles and eight of them jumped over the guard rail into the wood line. And the wooded area that they went into backs up to Subaru Wakefield and that's a very large wooded area that connects to Parker Road, Elm Street and it runs the length of the commuter rail all the way down North Ave. So recognizing the severity of the situation, Sergeant Burnham made the call to call up the Nemlec SWAT team and they responded, they arrived probably around 3:30 and their role was to help set up a perimeter around the wooded area. So we stationed officers from Wakefield and the SWAT, Nemlec SWAT team on Parker Road, Elm Streets, some of the side streets that are off of Elm that back up to the wooded area and along North Ave. So we had probably about 30 to 35 officers at our disposal at that time. The State Police on the highway were continuing to negotiate with the leader of that group who remained on the highway. And there was a lot of back and forth. Some of you may have seen the leader live streaming his communications back and forth. Fast forwarding ahead, two of those suspects that jumped over the guard rail at some point made their way out onto North Ave and we were able to take them into custody on North Ave right near the light plant. One of them was armed with a handgun, both had full body armor on and they were dressed in fatigues. Realizing that, so we had about a two mile perimeter that we had set up and we just didn't have enough officers to do it. So we asked for more additional Nemlec assets. They called out the motorcycle unit and the regional response team. And we probably got another 150 police officers to respond from cities and towns all throughout Middlesex County, the Middlesex Sheriff's Department sent some people as well. So that we were able to really secure all the side streets off of North Ave, all of North Ave, every side street off of Elm Street, all of Parker Road. There was an extremely heavy police presence. And then the decision was made probably around 10:30. The individuals that were in the woods came back out to the highway and returned to their vehicles. The decision was made at that point where they were all together to try and take them into custody. So with the help of the Wakefield DPW who had attached four plows to four very large dump trucks, they went up the wrong way in the highway and blocked the highway for us so there would be no escape or they tried to get back in their cars and take off. And Nemlec deployed what's called an LRAD. An LRAD is a very high pitched audible alarm which basically disables somebody temporarily. So they deployed that and were able to successfully take the remaining nine people into custody. No injuries to any officers, no injuries to the suspects. So a successful outcome there. I'll touch on communications a little bit. So we communicated with the townspeople through code RED and we sent out an initial code RED to 2,280 phones and text messages at 4:30 in the morning. We limited that to the area that was most affected by this. We didn't wanna send that out to the entire town at that time of morning. Jen McDonald was, the Town's Communications Manager, was extremely helpful. She sent up follow-up code Reds to the entire town throughout the morning and she also helped us with Twitter updates on what was going on. So I'd like to thank Jen for her help, I'd like to thank Joe Conway for his help. They were great, couldn't have done this without them. And just to give you an idea of the, of Nemlec and their response. So we pay a fee belonging to Nemlec every year, the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council and it's a small fee and the response to what we got in return last Saturday, I would, I would expect that exceeded probably $1 million. When you add up personnel, equipment, canines, specialized vehicles, Wallfame and Tucksbury responded with their drone units. We were able to monitor the activities of some of these people while they were in the woods with the drones. So we couldn't have done this without Nemlec either, so just a great response from them and that's pretty much a breakdown of the whole event.
Wow. That's, that, I mean, that's far more than I had gleaned from the media reports and even more impressive. Any councilors wanna add anything, ask anything?
Steve, Chief Scory, I just wanna thank you and thank all the men and women in your department, the DPW, the Fire, Mass State Police, Nemlec and all the surrounding communities that assisted us. I talked to, I had friends in the zone, I had relatives in the zone, I was right outside of the zone and they all could not have been more impressed by how calm the police were, how professional they appeared. None of them were, I mean, they were afraid because it was such a unique situation, but they really, the communication that you had with those folks was very, was just outstanding. I think it was very smart to not send a code red to the whole town right away. I think it was strategic and smart to focus on just the area up, you know, the west side usually doesn't see a lot of excitement, but we had our share. And, you know, this could have gone sideways, 100 different ways at any time and I've said again and again, the professionalism, the education, the training of your department in Massachusetts law enforcement, you know, in a different state, this looks very different. So I just, I cannot be more proud and grateful for what you did and how you represented Wakefield. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I was amazed, I was amazed at the outcome, that there were no injuries, that it was such a dangerous situation and it's difficult when you have one and when you have 11. It must have been amazing. But I think that the support of your leadership and the town's leadership of moving us forward was unbelievable and really appreciated. I think it also shows the importance of continued training and investing in training because you never know when you're gonna need that. And also having good relationships with our neighboring communities and also the investment with Nemlec. So, thank you for keeping us all safe. It was extraordinary, it really was.
Thank you.
Sorry Jonathan, it's hard to see your hand, go ahead.
Oh, thank you Madam Chair and thank you Chief Scory. I, you know, I don't wanna sort of dwell on what folks have already said, but, you know, I spent much of Saturday from when I got that reverse night on one call at quarter of five with a pit in my stomach thinking about how this might turn out and, you know, the fact that it did turn out as peacefully as it did, as everyone's mentioned, is really just a testament to your leadership, to the department as a whole, the training that our officers receive and to the State Police as well. So thank you for that. I thank you as well for acknowledging, I think, the cooperation we had from other departments in town. You know, you mentioned the DPW, Jen McDonald, I know Tom Walsh was involved in this as well. I think people sometimes sort of lose sight of the fact that an incident like this really does require kind of an all hands on deck approach and we certainly had that. So, very, very, very grateful both for the outcome and to be, you know, so well protected by the women and men of our police department. So thank you.
Thank you. And I know that there's people who I forgot to mention, but I will say this, that every time we have any kind of incident in town, whether it's fire related, police related, DPW related, every department works extremely well together.
Ed?
Thank you Madam Chair. Chief, I obviously echo what everyone else has been saying. It is just such a testament that, once again, the department has been tested in the most unusual of circumstances. And, I mean, for a town of 25,000 to have the kind of training and leadership that we do in your department and then the other departments you mentioned, Fire, DPW, Communications, Emergency Management, I mean, that, and I know that Town Minister Mayo was also, you know, keeping us all apprised and was also very much involved as well, just the coordination, you just made it look so easy. And this was an incredibly volatile situation and an incredibly dangerous situation and I think the communication was spot on. I think it was appropriate, it was at the right level and I feel like the town really felt like they were informed throughout of what was going on. In as real a real time as you could do, certainly in the circumstances. So, again, there, your department's had too many tests in the last couple of years certainly. But yet again, you know, paths with flying colors, you've just done such a phenomenal job and I think it does just underscore the importance that we never know what you're going to be facing. And so having the training, having the funding, making sure that you're able to execute, you know, as you were, you know, with that incident, it's just so incredibly important for public safety for all of us. So, again, thank you to all the departments that were involved.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve, please.
Chief, you don't have to call me so early in the morning anymore, okay? Or anybody else, please. But what is amazing to me is the coordination of that effort down there. It was just amazing to see that and to step back and to watch them and watch them use the drones and all the training of all of our people and the respect that all of the area chiefs have for us. It was unbelievable, but I wanna focus on the first officers, our officers on the scene, Officer Jancy and Peterson and Sergeant Burnham. Officers Jancy and Peterson, they're rookies, basically, right? They are.
They are. Each one, Officer Peterson has one year, almost exactly one year with us and Officer Jancy, six months.
Six months. So you can see what the rigors that the department puts through our young officers in so that they were cool, calm, collected. What a great job, Chief, keep it, keep it up.
Thank you. And I would prefer not to call you 4:30 in the morning.
I think Jan got a call.
Just happens that way. Madam Chair, could I add one more thing?
Of course.
So the success of this operation really hinged on cooperation of our residents and we sent out that code red asking people to shelter in place and everybody did, everybody did. I mean, we couldn't have done this without our residents' cooperation. So I wanna thank them for that and I also wanna thank the organizers of the farmers market. They showed up at about 5:30 in the morning and they were met by a lot of police vehicles and a lot of heavily armed police officers. And they said, I guess we're not doing this today, are we? And so I asked them to cancel and they did and they were, they were great about it and I wanna thank them for that.
Great. Anything else? No? I think my only other observation is I really appreciate, Steve, I don't know whether it was you or Jen McDonald, the follow-up with the code red. So everybody was thinking code red and I really appreciate kind of the, just the informational follow-up on that so that people who maybe didn't get it or didn't realize it was an option now do. And I'm amazed that you can slice and dice and limit it to a certain area. So that's a very powerful tool that I, I'm glad we have.
Right, and Jen needed to make sure that she was coordinating with Stonem and Redding and the state.
Yeah.
Because, you know, when you have an incident like this, you wanna have one voice. You know, we couldn't have Wakefield saying, no more shelter in place and Redding is saying, oh no, there is a shelter in place. So that coordination worked very well and, you know, really was a testament to, you know, Jen's abilities, the abilities in the other towns and the fact that we, you know, we have pretty good synergy going on with our neighbors. So, thank you Chief, it was great.
Thank you Chief, thanks for taking some of your evening to share that with us. We really appreciate you and everyone on the group.
Well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Renaud, item number seven, the Broadway update.
Well, I'm actually happy to be here tonight because I'm providing some good news for once, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we reached agreement from FRA back on the 28th on our approach for the improvements at Broadway and Greenwood. So, basically, we are in the process, we already submitted our amended authority application before the 4th and so we're right now in our 60-day appeal period that I spoke about last time. We've reached out to all of the distribution lists required by the application and as we had last time, we haven't heard any, anything back from any of the other folks. So unfortunately, you know, I'm not expecting us to be able to reduce that 60-day appeal period, but we're gonna try our best to, and hound them as much as we can to try to shorten that as much as we can. Our design plans are finalized and forwarded over to our contractor as of last week and I'm waiting on the price proposal tomorrow from our on-call contractor to start the work out there. So I'm hoping to be out there within the next week or so. And so that's basically where we are. So we'll have the improvements completed prior to the 60-day appeal period. You know, if there is a way for us to get ahold of these folks, we will get ahold of them, that I can promise. But again, I'm not really optimistic that that's gonna happen. Last time, we didn't hear one word back, so I'd be surprised if they would take the time to write a letter to expedite the process, but that's where we are, so some good news.
Great, and that should put us by before Labor Day then.
Right around.
Right around there.
Okay, good. Any questions for Bill?
Again, Bill, great job. I know that you and your whole staff have worked really many, many hours and had some frustrating moments, but, you know, really great job.
Great, well, thank you.
Any other questions on other items? No? Okay. Bill, are you coming back to talk about the fleet policy or no?
I'm available to, I can stick around, sure.
Should we, do we have the people from the planning board on? Because that's a joint appointment.
We do.
We do, okay. You know what, Bill, that's okay because we're just, we're just going over it for consideration. If we have questions, we can come back and we're gonna take a vote on it.
Don't you hang on, Bill.
Yeah?
Yeah. He'll hang on.
Listen to him.
He'll hang on.
Okay, great. So then we'll move on to item number eight. We have a series of appointments. 8A is the joint appointment for the planning board. And I see we do have the members, some of them, Matt and Theo and Megan from the planning board. So we will start with that. Oh, Bill. Oh, and here comes Bill. Bill's coming, okay. Great. So, seeing as this is a joint appointment, does the planning board want to start?
Well, I need to call, to order the special joint meeting.
Of course.
So, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Bill Spalding.
Here.
Megan Minasali.
Here.
And Theo Noll.
Here.
Alright. Alright, so unfortunately, we, as a planning board, we do not have a recommendation because we got the applicants after our last meeting, so we have not had a chance to actually meet as a board. So, you know, if you're looking for a recommendation from us, we really, you know, as a board, I cannot, I cannot speak on behalf of the board. So, what I can do is, you know, give my, my thoughts on this are, Joanne has been very active and engaged and I appreciate her input. But we also have another applicant that may potentially, you know, be a good fit for the board. Since this is a, basically a short-term appointment until the next election, myself, I would be willing to give this Jim Hogan an appointment for the remainder of the. this year to see what they're like. And then, when we come into the next season in April, we would be able to have evaluated both people to see which one the voters would actually prefer to have on the board as an elected official. So, again, I can't speak on behalf of the board. That would be my, my thoughts on that.
Through you, Madam Chair? Of course.
Matt, if I could make a suggestion, that you could certainly make a motion to place Jim Hogan's name, and we could vote on that. We've, you know, we've done different ways for, for combined meetings, but certainly, if you want to make a motion that's similar to what you just said, we could, we could take a vote.
Yeah, so, so I will make a motion for, for Jim Hogan.
Do I, is there a second?
Second?
And discussion?
Can I, can I, Madam Chair, can I just ask Sheri, so this seat expires in April? Yes, I'm just confirming, yeah, okay.
So, it would be now through April of 2022, at the election, because it would be, it's an elected position.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, through you, if I could just ask the members of the planning board, it's, it's a little bit unique in that there was someone who had, that, with whom they had worked, you know, for, for a period of time, and then there's obviously a new applicant now. Do the other two, I think we have, what, two other members on? Do the other two members have any kind of, any feedback, you know, relative to the review of both applicants?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And there's three of us on, but I'm, I'm happy to provide feedback. I'm sure the other members would as well, I don't want to speak for them. So, Bill or Theo, I don't know if you're open to providing feedback as well?
Definitely.
Yeah, this is Bill Spalding. Thanks for the question, Ed. I don't mind providing feedback. In my experience working with Joanne, it was wonderful to have her on the board, she has a different point of view. I did feel, working with her separately on the zoning, lake zoning, it, it wasn't that smooth, it didn't really work well for me, where I felt like the work that she was supposed to be working on never came through. So, a lot of the work that we presented to the board was really work that I had pulled together. And I feel that I'd like to give Jim Hogan a chance to look at how he works with the board, to see if it's, it's more beneficial for our board to have someone who does follow through on the work that they said they would do and does help the board move forward with a lot of the, let's see, I don't know how to put it, but a, a lot of the proactive side that we're looking to do, I'm really hoping that Jim does have that approach to our board and can really help us in the next couple, well, the next eight months. And then, as Matt mentioned, the town will be able to have their say or their vote to, if, if Jim and Joanne plan to run for our election in April, it would be good to see what the town will do about that.
Great.
Megan, I'd be happy to speak, but if you would want to.
Go ahead, Theo.
Sure, sure. As the newest elected member to the planning board, I want to express my gratitude to both nominees. Does that mean? The echo. I, I got to speak with Jim. I'm sorry, the echo is really unfortunate.
You sound okay to us. We don't hear the echo.
Oh, good, all right. I really, I got to speak and meet with Jim this morning and get to know him a little bit better. Jim Hogan is an experienced public engineer with several years in the construction and real estate industry. And his professional experience and skills and his interest in serving as a new, serving on the planning board as a new town member, I think really needs to be commended. His skills would be a welcome addition to the planning board, zoning, even conservation commission. And I, I think it's really important that we encourage Jim and others in town to participate in a lot of the good civic work that, that's happening. And, and we have a lot of work that will be before the town in terms of planning and zoning and, and, and I think both conservation and the built environment. However, having gotten to get to know Joanne through the election and, and her commitment and growth through the campaign to support strategic and smart growth, sustainable development, and help the town get to and expand our affordable housing stock well beyond our, our 40B minimum share, I think really is commendable. And because she and I had been in the scrum together, I think it's, I, I feel very sort of equally divided supporting Jim Hogan and, and Joanne Schooler. But having recently been in an election with Joanne, I, I'm going to ask that, that we consider Joanne for, for the appointment.
Thanks, Theo. And I'm with Matt and with Bill, I'm in favor of recommending Jim Hogan in regards to the fact that I'm, I'm impressed with his, his background in regards to being relevant to the planning board, as well as the fact of his volunteer experience and background was, was commendable. And I think that he would bring a, a great fresh perspective to the board, especially being a, a new town member but familiar with, with the area. So, I'm on board to recommend Jim Hogan.
Great, thank you. Ed?
Sorry, Madam Chair, so, thank you, planning board. I think that's really helpful insight for, for me personally and I imagine probably my colleagues as well. The one thing that stood out to me, I'm speaking, I guess, to both bodies now, is Jim, they both had a clear commitment to the town, I think, and in different ways, they, they brought in skill sets that I think would, would benefit us. What, what stood out to me with, with Jim Hogan, and I would just ask that, this is something that, you know, be communicated pretty clearly, is the issue of, you know, open space, Lake Quanah Powhat and, and, you know, how important that is to us as, as our greatest natural resource. Because I know he has a construction background. And so, my, my biggest hesitation is that, you know, he had mentioned he has a lot of contacts with, like, developers and construction folks, which, which I think is, is a unique skill set certainly. But I think that it's pretty clear, the consensus of the community is that, you know, looking at zoning bylaws, trying to make sure that we can, you know, preserve space around the lake, trying to be smart about the way we develop so we're not overdeveloping, you know, going forward, having, you know, ways that we can, you know, look at, at planning going forward in a more, even more strategic way, so that, you know, a lot of the concerns that many of us hear every day from residents are, are appropriately addressed. I just don't want to give the, the, I don't want, I don't want to raise any concerns that we're putting someone on the planning board that has a pro-construction or pro-development bent, because that is definitely not the bend of the people that I hear from, you know, that, that expressed to me concerns about the rate of development and, and the absence of smart growth with development. So, that's my personal opinion. I get the sense that a lot of us probably hear similar sentiments from people in town. And I think it's really important that it not just be, you know, instilled in Mr. Hogan, but also, you know, I think our body and, and your board as well, that that's a priority going forward that I think we can all be on board with and make sure we're executing on in, in a more effective way than we are currently. Because there's a lot of opportunity there for us that, that I think we need to realize to, to address a lot of concerns that are raised. Thank you.
Great. Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I actually do want to echo Counsel Dombrowski's point, that I, I do think, you know, as we think about sort of what we're hearing in the community, you know, one of the things that was a positive outcome, I, I think, of, of Joanne Schooler's tenure on the planning board, you know, was her pushing for approaching the lake bylaws and, you know, notwithstanding the, the great work that Bill's done as well. You know, that, that was certainly something that Joanne at least kind of made the impetus for. And I, I do want to make sure that, you know, regardless of what we do in the appointment today, that that work does continue. The other point that I want to make, and, and this is not to argue for or against, you know, either Jim or Joanne, but I, I do want to make sure that, you know, as a, as both sort of the appointing body, the, the town council and planning board together, but, you know, also sort of a request to the planning board, just to make sure that, you know, as we consider changes to, you know, our zoning bylaws, as we consider particular subdivision projects, you know, the board, having expertise on the board is really important, but I think also having sort of the resident, the layperson's perspective becomes important as well. And so, I, I would just ask that, again, regardless of where we go with the appointment today, you know, that we make sure to keep that, that in mind. You know, professional experience is, is wonderful and, you know, we would not be well-served if we had a board that didn't have strong professional experience. But, you know, we also need to be mindful of the fact that we're trying to make decisions for a community where people are living. And so, making sure we have that resident perspective, you know, and having the perspective of individuals that, you know, aren't architects by background or engineers is, is also something that I just want to make sure we, we are mindful of as we go forward. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? So, we have a motion on the table made by, motion to nominate James Hogan, made by Matthew, Matthew Lowry and seconded by Anne Santos. If there's no more discussion, we'll do a roll call. Yes?
If, yeah, I, I believe Theo did make a motion for, for Joanne, so I'm going to second that, so we actually did.
No, you can't do.
Do your motion first.
Yours first, Matt.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, the motion on the table is to appoint James Hogan to the remaining term through April 2022 to the planning board.
Start with planning board.
And I'm going to start with planning board, exactly. Matthew Lowry.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Theo.
No.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Okay. Ed Dombrowski, Counsel Dombrowski.
Hi.
Counselor Danahy.
No, this is for Jim?
Yes.
No.
Counselor Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
No.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
And myself, no. So, we have a vote of five in favor and four against, and congratulations. What?
I think six.
Six, six in favor and four against.
Six in favor, I'm sorry. I counted wrong. Six in favor, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
And four against. So, congratulations, Mr. Hogan, welcome to the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, counsel and planning board.
Great. I should say to the planning board, I don't know whether you have seen any of our previous meetings, we did not assign liaisons to the planning board or conservation commission or ZBA, but we're hoping to bring you in quarterly, for quarterly updates and discussions together with those other two bodies, to encourage working together and just general communications across town. So, we hope to see you back with us maybe at the end of September. We'll be in touch.
All right, thank you, yes. Jonathan did reach out to me, so I appreciate that.
Great.
Just one reminder to Jim, you, you can attend tomorrow's meeting, but you won't be able to vote unless you get sworn in. So, you, you need to get sworn in tomorrow if you want to vote on something tomorrow night. So, thank you, I'm welcome.
Great, yeah.
So, at this point, I would like to make a motion, a here motion to close the planning board portion of this joint meeting.
I'll make a motion and to welcome Jim to the planning board.
All right, do I hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote to close the planning board portion of the joint meeting. Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Theo Noll.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you, town council, and we will see you, see you soon.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to appointment to the Human Rights Commission, we have a, the, the human rights rules that we recently adopted read that the superintendent selects a student liaison. And we had, Steve, did you want to add anything to the process on this?
I think it says that the superintendent recommends.
Recommends, recommends, sorry, recommends.
Recommends and, and the appointment of the town council. Yes, there were two applicants, one of which came through the town's normal procedure and one of which came from the superintendent, I don't know how, how that got to us. But the superintendent had received both applications, or had received the one that we had back in, when was it that it went? I have it here, April, I believe. So, had that awhile and he strongly recommends both wonderful candidates, and we, we, one of the students, we always want to say, and they are both wonderful candidates. And he does strongly recommend Emanuela Partika, who is a junior, who has distinguished herself leading and supporting new multicultural curriculum literature and learning experiences that connect students. She's an exceptional student leader. The other candidate is a member of the Clean Lake Committee and Environmental Sustainability Committee and the Black Student Union and does a lot of other things at the school, but is a member of a couple of other committees anyway. So, superintendent does recommend Emanuela Partika.
Great. And I can say Abby's been a great member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, so. So, again, we have a recommendation from the superintendent, and so, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
To, to accept the superintendent's recommendation of Emanuela?
Yes.
Okay.
Second?
So, we have a motion by Maureen and a second by Counsel Santos. Any discussion? Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I just ask, so why is it though that we only have one application to review? Because it would seem that to make sense that we would have at least both applications to look at, right?
You got an application and you got a memo, I think, from the superintendent. That's all, that's all that we have, yeah.
No, I, I recognize, like, yeah, I'm just not, I'm just not sure why, but just from a, just purely from a process there.
Right.
So, I think, and maybe Sheri, I've been, so we didn't actually advertise for this position?
We did.
We did actually advertise for the position?
We did.
Okay.
And, and the application that I received, I forwarded to Doug in April.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Never heard from Doug, yeah.
I, I think that perhaps with the changing, with our, the board changed the procedure, that might have been why, but I don't know.
Okay. So, it's a valid, it's a valid question. So, we had one that came through that procedure and one that apparently went directly to the superintendent, and we have the recommendation from the superintendent.
I mean, because the, the applicant who submitted the, who went through the process, she did stand, certainly stand out as, as very impressive, although given the commitments that are already, you're already on, like, Clean Lake, I think it's environmental sustainability or.
She's on Clean Lake and Environmental Sustainability.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, so she, I, I think she's already, you know, doing a good job of, like, representing the student, you know, population in, in those capacities. It just, it just struck me as if we did, if we did post for this, you know, why we didn't have an application from both people.
Yeah. We'll make sure that in the future that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, we do have a motion. Jonathan?
Thank you. Just on the process question, I, I don't recall in prior years us ever soliciting applications or, or voting on the, the student representative. My, my recollection was that that's, that's generally all, that's always been sort of a, a selection by, by the superintendent. Certainly, I, I think, obviously, you know, we went through this process, you know, while we were doing the policies and procedures document. So, you know, it's a, it's a little more convoluted this year, but at least from a precedent standpoint and maybe others who've been on the council longer than I am, I have could, could speak to this. I, I don't recall us ever going through a process where the student representative came from a town council solicitation and appointment.
I think you're right. Do you recall?
Right, I think, I think historically, the superintendent was given a choice, or was giving a, the position to recommend someone to us, and so, we weren't, not, micromanaging isn't the right word, but we were putting our faith in the superintendent.
I don't recall us ever going through a process where the student representative came from a Town Council solicitation and appointment.
I think you're right. Do you recall?
Right, I think, I think historically, the superintendent was given a choice or was giving a, the position to recommend someone to us, and so we weren't, not micromanaging isn't the right word, but we were putting our faith in the superintendent to bring us a candidate that was a strong candidate. I appreciate what Ed said about the process, you know, maybe going forward, we can change it, but I have no problem, you know, relying on what the, who the superintendent is presenting. I know Abby Lane, actually, I don't know the student. She danced with my daughter, basketball. She's, she's a great young woman. I would encourage her to be a part of the Human Rights Commission, perhaps in a different way than the appointment, but I think it's clear both candidates are wonderful. I don't think we need to upend this vote today because of maybe moving forward with a more strict process.
I think to speak to Jonathan's point, if I may, in the past, it was solely a superintendent of schools appointment. There was no vote by the Town Council.
But the change in rules and policies.
Policies.
I think we've discussed about things coming through this body as an HRC is established by this, this body. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the appointment of Emanuela Partika as recommended by the superintendent, and we have a second. Any additional discussion? No. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Danahy?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Santos?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, congratulations to Emanuela and Abby, please keep up all the great work on your other committees and feel free to contribute to the HRC as well. Okay, Mr. Duoh, you're back with us.
I think you have the Youth Council first.
I am.
Yeah, that's Jack.
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Renault.
No, David Duoh. So, finally, we have appointments to the Youth Council. This is a follow-up to our last meeting. These are to officially name the non-voting members as discussed. Jack, do you want to give any background?
Yeah, so last meeting, you guys asked the Youth Council to kind of establish our non-vote member positions, and I went back to the council at our last meeting on June 30th, and I presented kind of my thought process, and we voted on it, and the council approved my thoughts, probably wanted to run our non-vote member positions. So, basically, on the raw, so they participate in all meetings, submitting meetings, you just won't be able to vote on anything, but they still, the official members just can't vote, and everyone approved that. And unfortunately, it's been about this year, and we're really excited for our new members.
Great. And so, we have a memo here from you asking that we, that you recommend the following people. Paige Arkansas, Matthew Connolly, Megan DeCoursey, Isabella Schwartzberg, and Juliana Spalding. Is that correct? Great.
That's correct.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second, yes.
Moved by Anne Santos, seconded by Councilor.
I was prepared to say all the names.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I got ahead of you.
I move, yes, second.
Okay. Going fast. Guys, stay on your toes around here. Was there any discussion? Ed, please.
Sorry, can I just ask, do we still have that open middle school voting seat?
Yes, I think we're going to re-advertise for that.
Okay. So, have we, has that happened yet or is that happening more? Do we need, did we vote to re-advertise, Madam Clerk?
No, we have not, no. So, so none of these non-voting members are not middle school members, Jack?
No, they are all high schoolers.
Okay, yes, no, haven't advertised yet.
Yeah, so I think we decided at the last meeting, Ed, to advertise again, so probably since it's summer, well, we should be able to get it done hopefully by September, you think, Sherry?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so any additional discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Santos?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Danahy?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Refusing myself.
Okay. And Councilor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. So, we have a vote of five in favor and one recusal. Great. So, welcome to Paige, Matthew, Megan, Isabella, and Juliana.
Excellent.
Great.
Thanks, Jack.
And thank you, Jack, for all your work on this. Okay, item number nine, sustainable fleet policy. So, we just have this up for consideration. It's a, it's a pretty hefty document, but just for background, and then I'm going to let Bill talk about some of the details. This is one of the five steps that we have to take to become a green communities, an application that we are planning on submitting this fall. And so, Bill, I'm going to let you give background, but my understanding, this is modeled after communities that have reached similar green community status. So, please go ahead and give any background.
Chair, basically, what it, what it does is it just requires, as we go to procure new vehicles, that we look at procuring battery electric vehicles first. So, basically prioritizes the four types of vehicles, battery electric vehicles, plug-in hybrid vehicles, hybrid electric vehicles, and then just your standard vehicle. So, anything that would be a light duty or medium duty vehicle would fall within the policy. You know, when I worked in Concord, this was something that we were doing, you know, I'd probably say eight to 10 years ago. So, really, it's modeled after that town. We actually took that from another town at the time. So, essentially, this is kind of the boilerplate that most of the communities are using. This is really not, I know it's a lot, a lot of language in there, but really, it's, that's the real gist of it. So, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, a lot like everything else we've discussed about this, or one of the last communities in Massachusetts to become a green community, so a lot of this has been vetted out. But we didn't want to bring it just for a vote and see if there's any discussion, if any of the other town departments have any concerns. I had a brief conversation with Chief Scory a while ago, when I think we were talking about vehicles, you know, even they're looking at it. Now, they're exempt from something like this, but we've heard the Light Department already talk about doing something, so hopefully it's not.
Joe Conway at DPW is okay with it too.
Great, great.
But I think it is like Madam Chair said, it's a pretty hefty document. Just wanted to get it out there and discussed and maybe at the next meeting.
Public can look at it as well, and then we will put it on the agenda for the following meeting so that we can stay in our timeline for the green communities. Jonathan, you had a question?
Thank you. Just a quick question, and I'm supportive of this in concept, certainly. I think it's a, it's a good policy decision, and certainly I'm glad to hear, you know, that both the DPW and the Police Department are supportive of it. The one question I had, and maybe this is something that we can bring back as part of the vote, if we do vote on it in the next meeting, is would it be possible to get an inventory of sort of the current vehicles that the town owns and kind of what falls under, sort of which bucket of what's retired in the, in the policy? You know, I think I have a rough sense as to where some of the vehicles fall, but you know, I mean, there, you know, obviously, we have so many, so many cars and trucks that we own, that I think it'd be helpful just to get a sense as to what current state is and where this policy might actually impact replacements for those vehicles in the future.
Sure, yeah, that actually is part of the policy, so we're actually required to do it. So, yeah, that's something we can definitely include for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a chance to review, excuse me, all of this, and I appreciate the objectives here, certainly. I think the biggest concern that I have with this at this point, have you looked at it, is the mandate that is required relative to the purchase or lease of exclusively battery electric vehicles for all light duty passengers, we replace them by this year 2022. I realize that's not going to be achieved, but I don't, I don't think until we have a better sense of, you know, understanding kind of operationally and from like a cost standpoint, that that mandate feels appropriate. I think the next bullet, where it talks about piloting, evaluating, and where feasible acquiring electric vehicles, I think that seems like a reasonable objective if, you know, if there are benefits to be derived, you know, without costing us, you know, far more than we otherwise would, but it, but I don't feel comfortable with the idea of having a mandate for electric vehicles. I mean, I think we've seen, you know, from what Gas and Light has reported so far, you know, usage around town, and I know that electric vehicles are gaining in popularity, but I'm not convinced at this point that we're to the mass production level where it's going to justify from a taxpayer standpoint to be making those sorts of purchases. And I also don't know, I mean, operationally, I know they have to be charged and, you know, and the rest. I don't know the logistics of that, but I don't see why we can't have, you know, the, an objective of piloting, evaluating, and where feasible acquiring as compared with mandating.
I think, I think what we need to do is probably, Phil, you didn't run this by the Green Communities Group, did you?
No, no, actually, I mean, I didn't draft it. I think Steve worked with, I gave him some examples.
I think that's a, that's a valid point, and I think, you know, we should see what we have to do in order to get the green communities. I haven't found anything else in green communities to be so onerous, to be unachievable, or to put any municipality in an uneconomic situation. And so, let us, I think that's an important point, and we'll take it back and see what's actually required under, under the green communities. I mean, I will say, being an electric vehicle, I have spent $50 on maintenance in four years, so I think it's not just looking at, it's looking at kind of life cycle costs as well. So, and we can evaluate all of those. So, point taken.
Great.
Good.
Yes, what is our fleet replacement? Like, how often are cars replaced?
Oh, it depends. We do have a pretty good fleet policy now, where we didn't particularly think about our police cars. We do three a year now to keep them going. We've kind of whittled away a lot of the backlog in our DPW cars, so it's, used to be, in the old Capitol days, when you were on the Finn car, it was like once in a blue moon.
Yeah, once in 20 years.
So, now it's, now it's pretty robust. So, we could work this in with the policy.
Yeah.
This is doable, yeah.
So, it's definitely doable. And I do think that we could save, save money by like the gas and the maintenance.
Yeah, I think there's some, but, but I think you have to look at all of the, all of the costs and, you know, installing battery or.
We'll have to have more chargers.
Chargers and municipal buildings and all of that.
Is this saying that it will all, all of the cars, not the, not the public safety ones, but the, the not high-usage ones, those will all be replaced by 2022?
No.
That was a placeholder.
That was a placeholder, okay.
So, obviously, we couldn't do it by then, yeah. But in the future, yes, there will be a date.
There will be a date, and, okay, okay.
Good. Okay, we wanted to give lots of time to talk about this, so if anything else comes up, please let us know, and we will bring this back on the agenda next month. And I know the fleet policy, the inventory of the fleet is something we're looking at, because under green communities, we have to get a certain energy reduction, and some of that can come through fleet, lower fleet emissions as well. So, it's consistent. Okay, if there's no other discussion on that, we can move on to the request for acceptance of donations to our library. Do I have a motion to accept? Let's see how much it is. It's $350.53. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Butt, seconded by Councilor Santos. Any discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Councilor Danahy?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Santos?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Excellent. So, that passes six to nothing with thanks. Any, is that the only motion? Yeah, so any announcements from the councilors? Oh, come on. Everybody's in summer lull. Jonathan, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick things. First, just wanted to highlight that the, the third and final virtual public survey for Vision 2030 closes tonight. So, given that this is sort of a relatively short meeting by our standards, anyone who's on the meeting or watching at home, you've got a few hours left to finish that survey. As I mentioned last time, it actually is a really thought-provoking set of questions. I found it really valuable to actually take the survey in terms of thinking about some of our priorities as a community, and so we'd love to have as many folks respond to that in the next few hours as possible. Just the other thing I did want to mention, you know, we talked earlier in the meeting when Chief Scory was here about the incidents last weekend, and, you know, one thing that I did want to highlight is that I think for a lot of people in town, you know, that could be something that created a lot of anxiety and quite frankly, a lot of trauma. You know, it's, it's pretty jarring to get that, that phone call, the reverse 911 call at quarter of five, saying that there's an armed group in the woods near your house. And so, for anyone in town who, you know, is having a hard time coping with that, or if that's brought up any, any past dramas or anything like that, I just want to make sure we send the message that, you know, you're not alone. These are our normal things to think about, and, you know, we fortunately do have resources in town to help if folks are struggling between the interface program, the mass support program that Riverside Community Care offers, and other resources on our website. So, certainly hope anyone who needs that does take advantage of that, because again, this is, was not a normal incident, and certainly, it's absolutely understandable and appropriate if people are struggling with it in some way. So, with that, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Marine?
Thank you. I just want to add a little bit to what Jonathan said, and again, thank our public safety officials, and the coronation was unbelievable. And I also just want to, I think Anne mentioned this, but just that people did stay home and listened, and even on social media, you know, I think that there's a little concern that people might have gone, like peeked out, gone to the farmer's market to see what was happening, and people really followed directions and stayed safe to let others do their job. And I just want to recognize that, that I think it made everyone's job easier, and just commend everyone in our town. You know, these things don't happen that often, and you don't really know what to do, but everyone kind of listened, and, you know, we talk about the evils of social media and Facebook, but I actually think it worked. It got people to kind of stay put all morning, which is what we needed them to do. So, I just wanted to thank everyone, including Public Safety, again, for that. And I also want to pass on, I should have said this when Chief Scory was here, but I got calls from all over the state saying that our police chief sounded better and smarter than all the other officers, and so I accepted the praise with pride of Wakefield. Just a couple of announcements. WCAT Princess Bride was rained out last weekend, last week, but we are hoping that Rea, The Last Dragon, will be shown on Thursday. Jazz at the library is also back on Thursday, so summer events are back in play. So, enjoy summer in Wakefield when we don't have to sit inside. And then just, I'm going to jump ahead to matters not anticipated, if that's okay. I know we've talked about this a little bit, Steve, but we have $8 million coming to us from the feds.
Let's hope.
Hopefully, right? The state of Massachusetts, I think, is getting $3.5 billion. And so, I would just love to at a future meeting kind of talk about that. Awesome, great, just really exciting. And I know Senator Lewis was kind of telling us to, you know, have our ideas, and so there's, there's 115-page guidance about what the money can and cannot be used for, but just to have a conversation, because that's, that's pretty exciting. I don't, do you think we're not going to get it? We're going to get it, right?
No, I think that the, the state was very cute about, you know, $8 million, but five of, $5 million of that was through the county, and they hadn't decided how that was going to come forward yet.
Yeah.
So, and they kind of slipped it into one of the webinars, and I said, what are you talking about? Do you haven't decided? And then no one answered the question, but then I found out. So, but I think we're going to get it, yeah. The question is, how do we use it?
Right, so I'd love to just at a future meeting kind of have that conversation.
Yeah, I've been going through that 115 pages, and then they sent an update, so.
There's some really creative ideas in there too. It's an opportunity. So, we'll definitely spend some time. Steve and I talked about it this morning, we'll definitely spend.
And one of the ideas they said, just going back to what Councilor Chines said, was mental health services post-pandemic, right, which is something we've talked about, but just the traumatic events, and, yeah, so it'll be a fun conversation.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes, I just wanted to also, I wanted to thank Joanne Schooler for her service on the Planning Committee, and I met her during the campaign trail, and I know that she's been very dedicated, dedicated, and so I just wanted to thank her for the work that she has done, and I know that she's an advocate of preserving open space, which is something that I'm passionate about as well, so. And also, again, I just have to say, Wakefield is an amazing place. What happened, I was away and watching it and seeing CNN and reading it in the New York Times. It was, just brought a lot of, a lot of pride to live in a community and to live in a town that is so well-run, so, great job.
Anybody else? I'll just add that this weekend was the Fourth Annual Megan Burnett Tournament, and it is always a wonderful community activity, and we finally were able to dedicate the softball field. We've been trying since Memorial Day to do so, and it's been rained out, and we ended up doing it.